Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Today is Monday, February 5th, 2018. You're in the Rowan County Commission meeting, 3:00, and we are honored that you've taken your time out of your day and week to spend with us. We hope that you find your time profitable with us today. As is our tradition, and the tradition of elected bodies across the country, we start with a couple of things. We'll have our Pledge of Allegiance, and we'll also have a prayer by our chaplain, Chaplain Taylor. This is called a solemnizing prayer. This is for the commissioners as we seek wisdom to do the right things for this community. So commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Lord, we thank for this day. We're gathered here today as we come to the meeting today of the County Commissioners. We thank for those who are in attendance today, and we thank for County Commissioners and the love and dedication they have for what they do, Lord, for Rowan County. Pray your blessings upon them. Give them the wisdom they need today, Lord. The many decisions need to be made, and those within our audience today, we pray you'll be with them, any business they might have also today. Thank for your blessings you bestow upon us each and every day, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain Taylor. Before we get started, we would like to welcome our new EMS Director, Mr. Chris Sallez. If you'd stand, we'd give you a hand.[131.16][131.16](APPLAUSE). Chris comes to us from the Cheyenne Mountain, Colorado Department of Defense. So he comes here from Colorado, from the North American Aerospace Defense Command, or as what we know it, that are not in the business, NORAD. So we are honored to have you here, and I hope that you and your family acclimate to our community very quickly. We are so glad that you're here, glad you picked us, glad we picked you, and we hope you find your time here very enjoyable and profitable. So welcome. Let us know if we can do anything for you, Chris. All right. Is Brandon Lynn here? All right, Brandon's in the back. Brandon is Mayor Pro Tem of China Grove. Brandon, if you'd stand, we'd like to welcome you as well.[188.01][188.01](APPLAUSE). Here today. All right, so on our agenda, I have one addition to make that was provided by Ed Muir that was sent a few days ago, and I'm going to add that as consent item O, and that is for the support for Salisbury CDC Weatherization Assistance Program application. Ed added this because of a time constraint, so if there's no objection, we'll add that as letter O to the consent. I don't have anything else. Does anyone have anything else to add or take away from the agenda? All right, if not, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we have the minutes from January 16th were provided for us. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as received?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, then we have the amended consent agenda. Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Move on to public comment period. We have one person that has signed up, and that's Mr. Ronnie Smith. Ronnie, welcome back.
Thank you.
Glad to have you here.
Thank you very much.[283.27][283.27](LAUGHING).
Are these Chick-fil-A certificates?
Chick-fil-A coupons.
All right, excellent.
Right. Thank you very much.
My name is Ronnie Smith, and again, I feel like I know most of you very well. You're almost part of my family. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you once again on a very important subject, which is our Rowan County Vietnam Veterans Memorial, which we first proposed in 2012, or almost six years ago. Needless to say, it's been a very frustrating time for all of us. We read in the Salisbury paper yesterday that you've included newly proposed war memorials on your agenda today. I believe today may be the fourth or fifth time our committee, and myself, have come before the Commission and the City Council to ask for your support for our Rowan County Vietnam Veterans Memorial wall. Last year, we encountered a number of problems and questions, and although we tabled our requests last year, we greatly will appreciate your public support for this wonderful monument. I believe a majority of you attended the Veterans Day Ceremony that we had on November the 11th at the Veterans Administration Medical Center. I remember several of you in the audience, and thank you so much for your support of our veterans. At that time, if you recall, we read the names of the 40 Vietnam heroes from Rowan County who made the ultimate sacrifice in this war. That day, we had also planned to dedicate our monument. That did not happen, and it has now been stored in a warehouse in South Carolina for over one year. Our Rowan County Vietnam Veterans Memorial is supported by every single veterans organization in Rowan County. In the coming weeks, our committee will be meeting, and we plan to present you with a proposal for alternative sites, and this will be presented to both the city and the county. We will again please ask you to support this magnificent project for Rowan County. We're one of the few counties in the state of North Carolina which has yet to recognize its Vietnam veterans. Possibly a special counsel or even a task force could be appointed to help us review this updated proposal so that the decisions that are made are in the absolute best interest of our veterans and every citizen in Rowan County. God bless you, God bless our veterans, and God bless America. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ronnie. All right, item number three, Scott Shelton from EDC will talk to us about Project Wheel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, commissioners, for hearing another request in regards to Project Wheel. This has been a drawn-out process, but I hope we're close to the finish line on this one. For the sake of those in the audience who haven't been here in the past, let me quickly go over Project Wheel for them. It is a potential $11 million investment in Rowan County that would generate close to $729,000 of new tax revenue for the county over 10 years, also create 94 new jobs by the end of 2019, and also support a valued existing employer. Again, the parent company of Project Wheel wishes to reorganize and, I guess, improve its proximity to its customers, reduce its cost, and basically consolidate an operation in the Midwest somewhere else. Two locations in Rowan County are under consideration for this project, the Granite Industrial Park and Summit Corporate Center, and also facilities owned by Project Wheel's parent company in Kentucky and Indiana are also being considered. If we were chosen for this reorganization, again, 94 full-time jobs would be transferred here. They would pay an average wage of $33,334 with benefits. And also, in order to handle these new employees, the company would have to build a new 100,000 square foot facility in Rowan County. And again, it's important to note, if we're not selected for this project, we could lose the 94 jobs in addition to the 25 or so that are here now. And as you'll remember, at your November 20th meeting, you approved a Level 1 grant for the project. This would pay the company a grant of about $273,000 over five years. The county would retain about $91,900 during that time, and about $455,469 over 10 years. And also, at your January 16th meeting, the commissioners graciously approved a $100,000 equipment grant for the project that would be structured as a forgivable loan. And there's the numbers that we've talked about in the previous meetings. The new request, as previously mentioned, there's two locations in Rowan County that are possible locations for the project, Granite Industrial Park and Summit. The site under consideration at Summit is owned by the Keith Corporation, and they would be the developers for the project if their site were chosen. Their site is about 7.56 acres. They feel it's not large enough to accommodate Project Wheel's 100,000 square foot building and leave room for a future expansion. And there, on your map, there is the current Keith Corp. site. You see it's next to Snyder Electric, formerly Square D, there on Summit Park Drive, and again, about seven and a half acres. Keith Corp. submitted an offer to the county to purchase about 6.98 acres of county-owned land that adjoins their lot in Summit. They would combine this acreage with theirs to create about a 14 and a half acre tract to better accommodate Project Wheel's new facility. The acreage for this purchase would be taken from parcel 402C003 and would reduce its size to about 37.3 acres. And here's a map that roughly shows you the land that Keith Corp. wishes to purchase. It's the area shaded in green. It's almost an L-shaped track. And as you can tell, the county's lot, that parcel I mentioned, the 44 acres, it's really kind of spread out, and honestly, there is some acreage there along that curve of Corporate Center Drive that's really, may or may not be usable. There's some streams there to cross as well. And also, you may be able to see right above where it says "county," there's a sewer easement there also, so the acreage is somewhat carved up. But again, in green, the 6.9 acres is what Keith Corp. is proposing to purchase from the county. And there's the plat, I believe, that you may have received in your agenda packet. And also, I just got this today, this is, of course, a site plan that they're proposing for their new building. You can see the 100,000 square foot facility, and also in the dotted lines there, and I guess the southeastern corner of the screen is where they're proposing the 50,000 square foot expansion of the building down the road. There's no immediate call for that, but it's, again, always good to have the extra land if you need it. Keith Corp. submitted an offer of 20,000 per acre for the land in Summit, which would come to about $139,620. The property currently generates no revenue for the county, but the current tax value is about $31,850 per acre, about $222,345. Also, just as a reminder to everybody, the land is in Summit Corporate Center, so there is a clause in the covenants there that the county could buy the land back from Keith Corp. if no progress has been made on the project in two years. This was in place, again, for like the John Deere purchase a few years ago also, so that's always something to keep in mind from the county. And in closing, we think this would be a great project. It would retain 25-plus jobs, possibly add 94 new ones, and create $11 million of new investment in the county, generate about $455,000 of new tax revenue. The county would also benefit from the sale of the land of close to $140,000, and also develop almost seven acres of idle property, and most importantly, give us an opportunity to support an existing Rowan County business. So any questions regarding their proposed purchase?
Scott, is this land purchase contingent on Project Wheel moving forward, or they just want to buy the land now?
In our conversations with the company, they have, they realize they're putting some money into it, rolling the dice whether or not the project would come or not, so at this point, I think that they're open to just buying the land outright.
Okay. Scott, as, refresh my memory, the 20,000 per acre, is that similar to what we sold the retail property across the road for?
I think at the time, we sold that for a little bit more than 20,000 an acre, though I think it probably is in line with some of the purchases. Well, I take that back. I know that some of that land that was sold to Easter Creek, I think that was around 15,000 an acre, and there were some other provisions there for it. But yeah, I think it was a little bit less than what it was sold for in 2013, but of course, that was interstate fringe as well, so I think there was the expectation that it'd be a higher value involved with it, so.
Scott, the remaining parcel, once we would sell this land, would still have about 40 acres to it?
That's correct, though, Vice Chairman, I think there would have to be some talk about how to divide up what's left of it, because again, you know, we've had another company express interest in purchasing land out there, and you know, we want to give something that's usable to them, but also try to eliminate as many remnant tracts as we can that would be difficult for the county to maintain and mow and things like that. But yeah, at this point, I think that it would more or less leave a triangular piece of land between what they're purchasing and those easements, and at least at this point, we could have some access to that remaining property on that side. I know the commissioners are in talks about doing some other road improvements out there by the landfill, I'm sorry, the recycling facility, but still, it gives us some options.
So there would be plenty of room to put another 100,000 square foot building on that piece of property?
Well, if that land immediately behind what's now Amrep were used, then yes, but you know, as far as that triangular piece, that might be kind of tough there for that one, if you know what I'm referring to there, between the green and the easement there. But more to your east and southeast of that, then yeah, there would be room there for it if that land were sold. The tract there on the other side of the easement, it's carved up by some streams, and I think there's been some conceptuals done in the past to where at least one of the tracts could accommodate like a 60,000 square foot building and maybe a 20 in one of the other pieces. But as far as any kind of large-scale buildings out there, that piece behind what's going to be Amrep would really be it as far as what's left at Summit.
So that's probably why that piece is the last one in Summit to be sold with all the water and stuff around it?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's adequate room there for a large building, but again, we'd have to, you know, just, anytime you get closer to streams and creeks, it's a little bit of a crapshoot, but I think there is room there for an adequate-sized building, so.
The 94 jobs, we had already, we had already been through this with this company, and we had some jobs coming from another state. Is this in addition to those, or are those jobs that were coming part of that 94?
These are in addition to those. There's 94 jobs, and out of those 94, 79 are like assembly workers, warehouse workers, your more entry-level positions, and the average pay would be a little over $27,000 for those. Of course, the overall average wage is, you know, 33.3.
So my recollection was, we've got between 25 and 30 current jobs, and that there were an additional 30 or so that were coming from another state. And so this is another facility that they're looking at combining, so if we prevail in this, we would be getting the original 30 additional plus this 94.
That's correct.
So this is potentially 124 jobs. If we don't get it, we lose our 25 to 30, plus the 30 that were coming, plus the 94 that we're speaking of now.
That's correct.
So this is 94 and 30, 124, plus our original 20. So it's about, what, 150 job swing that we're talking about.
Yes.
Because your presentation didn't mention anything about kind of the Phase 2 we'd already been through on this, so that...
Well, that was more for confidentiality more than anything else, but you know, in the early stages of the project, but yes, you're correct, so.
And we received, just before the meeting, an updated copy of the contract. I've not had a chance to read through all of it, but I think the reason for the new copy was in Section 1, the number of acres was changed from 8.22, which Keith Corp. originally thought that they would need, but once they got their site plan done, they saw that they only needed 6.981.
That's correct.
Is that the only difference in the two contracts?
That's my understanding of it, but I would defer to the county attorney on that, but that's my understanding.
Is that correct, too?
Yes, they just reduced the acreage. We didn't, there wasn't any need to change anything else because it was just a per-acre price, so there wasn't a set purchase price in the agreement that we needed to change. It was just the acreage and the revised survey and site plan that was attached.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Scott? All right, Scott, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to open up the floor. We need to have a public hearing on this. So we're going to open up the floor to a public hearing if we have anyone that would like to speak about this project. Now would be a great time. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll open this for discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the contract as presented for the sale of the 6.981 acres.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion in a second. Further discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Motion carries. Scott, Rod, thank you. Go get them. All right, next item, from Bob Pendergrass, public hearing to consider text amendments to Chapter 5 of the Rowan County Code of Ordinances. Bob, welcome.
Thank you. Get things set up here. What I'd like to do is to try to give some background for why we're proposing these changes, and make sure that everybody has an understanding of where we're going with it, and give an opportunity for questions to be asked of me. So I'm going to start with a PowerPoint that kind of generalizes what we're going to do. Okay. First of all, thank you for, in your last meeting, providing us an opportunity to have a public hearing for this and move forward with these changes. The changes themselves started as an acknowledgement of some changes at the state level in laws regarding rabies, and I'll explain in a little bit more detail about what those changes were. But we also saw the opportunity to revisit all of our ordinances in a broad scale and go through everything and look at other things that we might want to consider, and in the process, had some meetings, I think some very productive meetings with citizen animal welfare groups, and also sat down with staff to address, along with them, some other animal welfare concerns, and looking at how our ordinances were worded in order to be able to better enforce and go after the goals that we were trying to achieve with those ordinances. We also, in revisiting the ordinances line by line, saw that there were some possibility to make some additional changes that we didn't make, that we intended to. Last time, we looked at the department restructure and how we are no longer a part of the Health Department, so we sat down, myself, with director from the Health Department and looked at those two. But the state law changes are based on a nationwide change that came as a result of a long and involved study and review of rabies concerns and animal control concerns as they are related to rabies at a national level. And in 2016, the National Association of Public Health Veterinarians put together a committee and published a compendium of their findings based on input from health professionals, both from veterinary field and from the human field across the nation over a long period of time, and they were looking at the best-case situations to provide information, to create laws that would address the concerns of rabies, which is a fatal human disease if it's contracted by humans, but also to look at the companion animal side and be as reasonable as they could about making sure that owners of pets did not have any more financial burden than they had to have in order to meet the needs of human safety, at the same time, you know, providing for that opportunity for them to be able to keep their animals because the cost would not be prohibitive. Interestingly enough, these specific things that made, were made into changes at the state law are not actually about humans getting bitten by companion animals. We know from veterinary research over a long period of time that both cats and dogs, if they bite a person and they're shedding the rabies virus, which means that they can pass it on to whatever they bite, that there is a 10-day incubation, a 10-day period that if we watch those animals and watch for behavioral changes and signs of rabies, regardless of their vaccination status, we know that that human is then safe. So that really hasn't changed any, and that was really not a huge cost factor for pet owners. What was a huge cost factor was is when their animal was potentially exposed to rabies from another animal, in the case of an individual's cat or dog coming in contact with a wild raccoon, bat, fox, or other animal, and then us not being able to access that animal to test it for rabies. The incubation period of the rabies is generally a lot longer period before they can start showing signs of the disease. So there were some pretty stringent rules that applied to that before, and they're still fairly stringent, but we want to make sure that, or the goal was, is to make sure that pet owners could keep their pets at the most reasonable level of financial demand and stress for them, if at all possible. And there's a lot of different situations involved. One situation may be, or a situation may be, that a pet has been vaccinated, and we know that that vaccination is current, and another situation may be that they've been vaccinated in the past, but we don't have a current vaccination. Another situation may be that an animal has never been vaccinated. So each situation demands a different level of concern and recommended action. There are several exhibits that were in the agenda packets, and probably the best explanation of those situations and how changes have been made to allow for people to potentially better be able to keep their pets are most, I guess, easily understood in Exhibit B, the fiscal impact statement, if you wanted to look at that. But again, generally, the goal was, is to, with current accepted knowledge, to reduce the impact, financial impact, to pet owners so that they could more readily keep their pets and not have to euthanize them, if at all possible. Last year, in the General Assembly, Senate Bill 74 was passed that basically, also, I guess, is, I should say, is an agenda packet item, and that was an agenda packet item, Exhibit E. And basically, that bill said that the General Assembly accepted the findings of the national compendium results and basically put it into language that they would accept in the future any changes that came along with any further changes at the national level. We did go a little bit further in detail because we felt like citizens might want to read specifically without having to hunt it down what it meant to them if their animal found itself in a situation. And those items are redlined in Exhibit A, Section 575, the title of destruction or confinement of an animal bitten by a known rabid animal. And I guess at this point, if anybody has any specific questions that they wanted to ask about that, I would try to answer them on that particular ordinance before I move on.
Bob, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Under Section 5-36A regarding restraint of non-vicious animals, where it reads that the confinement indoors are within a cage suitable for the animal, fence, used to be our vehicle, or similar enclosure, or vehicle during transport, so is this change saying that if a pet owner has their blue healer... So is this change saying that if, if, if a pet owner has their blue healer at a tractor supply store and it's in the back of the pickup truck on a leash secured, does this make that illegal?
It doesn't make it illegal if they're with the animal, is the way I would read that.
But if they go into the store and the dog is, is left in the back of their truck, secured to a leash, they'll be in violation of the ordinance?
We could interpret it that way. We would certainly tell them that they should not be doing that. Whether we would find them on the spot or not would be up for discussion.
I just want to make clear to the board that prior to the passage of this ordinance, it, it is not a violation of the ordinance for an animal to be left in the back of a pickup truck or in a vehicle. But if it's passed and it's as recommended, it will prohibit that.
Mr. Manager, does, does our current ordinance say that the animal must be secure in the back of the pickup truck?
It says that it shall be restrained, but what it, the current one says that, that, that an animal, if it's non-vicious, which means it's not a, you know, it's not a, it's just any, any dog, that it shall be restrained. And then it goes on to say confinement indoors or within a cage suitable for the animal, fence, vehicle, or similar enclosure. What this does is it strikes out vehicle, but it, and it goes on to say, or a vehicle during transport. So as I understand it, this makes it legal to take your pet to the vet in your vehicle, but if the vehicle's in the back of the truck or in the back of the car with the window rolled down and you go in and purchase gas or purchase groceries or, you know, purchase dog food and you come back out to your car, you're then in violation of the ordinance because you left your animal unattended in your vehicle. Although it's secured, it's still not, you know, it takes vehicle out and replaces that with or in a vehicle during transport. So, you know, as long as, I guess, the vehicle's moving, it's okay if the animal's in there. But once it stops moving and once you're not with the animal in the vehicle, you know, this would prohibit that.
And I will say, it was not our intention to address it in that specific manner. What our intention was in this is, is that there are instances, believe it or not, where people are using abandoned vehicles or even vehicles to house animals at their home. But that was not our intention, that an animal on a leash in the back of a vehicle would be a violation.
Would that, how would that affect hunting dogs in the back of cages, back of trucks?
Well, it is, it then would be a cage suitable for the animal.
So that'd be okay, then?
That would, that would be our intention, yes.
So, how do we fix?
How do you fix that?
How do we fix this? Because I understand the whole, you know, someone using an abandoned car for a kennel, basically. But if you're at Tractor Supply buying dog food, you know, you may be there 10 minutes, you might be there half an hour, an hour. A lot of dogs like to ride along. And I'm really concerned that we would be making these folks lawbreakers.
Yeah. Well, the, the next line in this, being loose in the back of an open truck does not constitute being restrained, I think, was kind of where we were feeling like we were covered. But we possibly do need to look at making that more clear in this. As opposed to being loose, Mr. Church is talking about an animal being on a leash.
Leave in or a vehicle that has passed an inspection within the last 12 months, that takes care of vehicles that are being used to make dog houses versus vehicles that are used for transportation?
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that would address the issue, or in a vehicle during transport. And again, I think we were probably thinking that during transport meant while they were going somewhere. But that would be an option.
Bob, I would like to ask you this. Could we not make that change to registered vehicles? Because they're talking about doing away with car inspections. So that would immediately make this not valid. And if the car's registered, then I would imagine it's because it's going to be driven.
Okay. That would certainly be something that we could do. Again, it was not our intention to prevent people from taking their pets certainly in a vehicle on a trip, but more concerned about using a vehicle as housing. So cage suitable for the animal fence or registered vehicle or similar enclosure, or in a vehicle during transport, or just not, or in a vehicle at all.
Inside the vehicle?
Registered vehicle.
Okay, just registered vehicle. We'll leave it that pending any further discussion of that. Any other specific questions or concerns anybody's come across?
Well, the whole vehicle thing is to, give me a ticket if I put my labs in the back of the pickup truck, go with me, they have to be chained in there somehow.
Yeah. And that was, again, I think, the intention of being loose in the back of an open truck.
They don't like that.
Is not acceptable.
And that's a civil penalty?
Yes.
What is it, a $50 fine, $25 fine?
Yeah, it wouldn't be, would just be a small civil penalty. And again, it would be up to, what we try to do is, we're, we're looking for compliance, not punishment, in every case that we can.
This isn't part of the new state rules that we're talking about.
No, this is not.
These are folks just asking that people not do this anymore, so.
Well, and actually.
I've been around Jim, Jim's got dogs and, well, so.
Actually, that, that particular change came from staff because we have had issues to where people are trying to use abandoned cars as dog houses. It didn't occur to us that it would change it in such a way that brought this concern up. One more thing about the rabid animal situation. One of the things that we had to throw in here, and you'll see that in the definitions in Section 535, is we had to define what strict owner supervision is. One instance allows, or actually, two different instances allow for an owner to take a dog that may potentially have been exposed to rabies after they have given the required inoculations. In such a case, I should back up. If their animal has been given a vaccination, we're always looking for supervision if the person takes it home. And there are a couple of different situations that would allow with these new regulations an owner to take their dog home under strict owner supervision. So we did define that specifically. Wanted to say, too, that when we met with the citizen group and addressed these particular things, like we just talked about, between the group and the staff, we talked about all these issues. We looked at last year's tethering ordinance changes and looked at some specifics about them. You'll see some changes in there as well. And there were some specific wordings, just like we saw with this one instance here with the restraint in a vehicle that we looked at and tried to adjust some concerns that came up. And we, I felt like we did have a really good consensus and understanding between the animal advocate group and ourselves and welcome any opportunity to discuss any issues with them in the future. We did look at some changes as part of that process in adequate shelter in 535 and some other things, including this vehicle issue that we just talked about. And we looked at some issues with restraint of non-vicious animals, particularly Items A, C, and G that are redlined in your information packet, if you wanted to address or had any concerns about any of those. I don't know if it's going above the state law or not. We had some questions that came up with staff when people were looking at this. We made the changes last time about specific tethering requirements, which are, in a sense, going above the state law. And the questions came up as to what they would have to do to qualify as a sporting dog. Initially, we were saying that they would have to provide proof that they were using these dogs for sporting purposes, a hunting license with the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission. And we did not have that in ordinance. So we felt like in order to be able to enforce it, we needed to have some specifics in the ordinance, that they would either have a hunting license or show proof that they're using the dog for, I think, the way we worded it, was specifically supporting documents that the owner has licensed to train sporting dogs.
So what were the issues that you were having that was coming up?
Just people seeing that that ordinance said that their dogs were sporting dogs. And there, unfortunately, there's a long list of dogs that are acceptable as sporting dogs under AKC guidelines. They're an AKC sporting breeds. And I think probably the strongest example of that that anybody would want to think about is, is that pit bulls are actually considered, under their guideline, sporting dogs. So we wanted to be a little bit more specific. Because our intention was, is that people that were using these for hunting sport, is that they'd be able to treat a little bit differently.
So when it says sporting breed, what, I mean, how do you define that if it's a mixed dog? It has to be pure.
That, that's where we're looking for a license, that they're using it for hunting. And it really gets pretty gray, to be honest with you. But if they can provide a license and they say that they're using this dog for bird hunting or squirrel hunting or whatever, then at least we've got that. So that's why we're trying to get more specific.
And these are for public areas? I mean, we're not going to go on people's property and?
This is for restraint on their private, private property. The restraint laws apply to the private property. Acceptable methods of restraint. Put my glasses back on. Back in 536C, it starts talking about restraint of non-vicious animals and gets specific into preferable containment of a dog. And then talks about, this is the thing that we added in last year. Dogs over six months old may be tethered in a restraint system outdoors. And we give some specifics about what that restraint system is. And then we look at, because at the time we passed this, we were, and even before, looking at some exemptions for sporting and working dogs. And that's why we wanted to put in those specifics about what qualified them as a sporting dog exemption. And we also made some changes, and this round of changes, too, to talk about what working dogs were. And down in Section G, working dogs were for the protection of business property or livestock. They may be kept on a property without an occupied domicile and are subject to the adequate shelter standards that we've already mentioned above. So we were really looking at answering some of the issues that were coming up as we were trying to implement this new tethering law and giving specific instances to solve the problems that we were encountering. That's why we made these changes this time.
Do you recall any examples of what the issues were, particular issue that you had and you had to?
We didn't have anything specific about the working dogs, but we did know that the way it was written, that especially just above that, when it talks about uninhabited property, the, the regulation was originally written, animals may not remain on uninhabited property such as a vacant lot or a lot without an occupied domicile. We know that in the county, there are places that people have property that they keep livestock on and they use pyrenees or some other large breed of animals to protect them from coyotes. And they may not always be on that lot with an occupied domicile. And we certainly wanted to allow that. Currently, the way the regulations were written, we could not. And so that was not so much a reaction to a situation that we came across as it was a realization of the fact that we know it's out there and that we wanted to make sure that we were clear to people that had concerns about it if it did come up.
So if there's disagreement between animal control and the citizen and they're issued a citation, what's their recourse?
There's a process. I mean, they would start by going to the supervisor of the enforcement. They would be issued generally a citation by an officer and then they can take it up the ladder. And then there's also a review process above the department itself, just within the commission.
So is there an appeals board or anything that it goes to eventually? Or is it ultimately you make the decision?
No, there, there is a decision that can be taken above me to the Board of Commissioners.
Is that all from you, Bob?
Unless there's any other questions, clarifications.
Anything else? All right. Bob, hang around.
Okay.
And we'll open up the floor for a public, for a public hearing to discuss this. So if we have anyone that would like to talk about this issue, then feel free to come forward. Give your name and address for the record.
Hi, Peggy Mills, and I'm from Spencer 804 North Rowan Avenue Extension. I'm just here to, just to offer my support of these ordinances and the, well, the revisions that were included. And to say thank you to Bob and to his officers because it was really a pleasure to sit down and work with them and see what their concerns with. And as it turned out, we typically do want the same things. And that's what Bob said, and I'm totally in agreement with him on that. I have a comment to make about the question that was addressed before concerning the vehicles and transport. The, every one of us who has dogs and loves dogs typically will transport our dogs at some time or another in our vehicle. They ride with us. Mine are always harnessed in, but they're in the car with me. And except in times of extreme heat, they can be left in the car temporarily. And, you know, when you're, the saying that the, the car is in transport, even though it comes to a stop at some point, it's still in the act of transporting. It depends on the logistics here and how you're looking at it. But the, the reason that we wanted the word "vehicle" left out completely is because people will use a vehicle to house a dog sometimes. It seems absurd, but it does happen. It seems absurd, but it does happen. And they could use a new vehicle for that matter. I mean, it's just to get the dogs out of a vehicle that is being used as a crate. That's the whole purpose of that. I don't think that any of the officers would have a problem with seeing dogs inside of a vehicle as it is parked at a, you know, a pharmacy, grocery store, whatever, unless it is in the extreme heat of the summer, when you do have to be concerned about that, which is just, would just be something that they would know how to handle in that case. But I think that if you take it, take it the way it's meant, that that's really what it is involving. And so I'm just completely in support of passing this. It's another step forward in keeping up with the surrounding counties and what's going on in our state concerning the animal welfare. So thank you again to Bob and his officers. And thank you to Mr. Pierce for being so supportive of this and keeping up with this. And all of you animal advocates out there, I'm thanking you too. So that's what I had to say.
Thank you. Any others? All right, if we don't have any, then we'll close the public hearing and open it up for discussion or motion from commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to make a motion to actually to table this and have Bob make those corrections that we talked about. Make sure that we've got the right fix when it comes to the tethering and being away from the vehicle and, I mean, all those different moving pieces. I'd like to wait until our next meeting to actually vote on this.
Okay, we have a motion to table. Is there a second? All right. Motion fails for a second.
I've got a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So do you currently have a fix to that situation we were talking about before? Is it going to take a little time to work the language out?
I think what I'd like to do is sit down with our attorney and look at specifics of the language. If there's concern about that, certainly it was not our intention. That was not the issue that we're trying to address.
So would you rather us bring this back?
If we have to accept it as is and the board has concerns over the language, then I would certainly want the board to be satisfied with what we produce.
So I'll make my motion again to table until next meeting.
Can we make the same motion? Jay?
Not by the move, not by the person who made the motion that failed.
What if I make the motion? Well, that settles your problem.
There are different options you have. One of them is to table it, have it back on consent agenda. We've had the public hearing. It can come back on consent agenda with the change marked, so you can see it, and it can be approved as part of the consent agenda without any further discussion, if that's what the board would like to do.
I'd make a motion then that we table this and we'll give Bob an opportunity to speak with the attorney and get it the way that he wants it, and then we'll bring it back and vote on it.
I'll second that.
All right, discussion. May I ask Commissioner Pierce, since this is your thing you're really a part of, are you good with the changes and coming back on consent agenda?
I don't think there's any problem with trying to make sure that the finished document is clear and understood. There seemed to be a little gray area here that I don't know that we've taken proper time to address. I just didn't want to table it. I would just rather have the changes made and put on the consent agenda so we can move this forward, since, you know, like the attorney said, we've already had the public hearing. So tabling it is really not the way I would like to address it. I'd just like for them to work that verbiage out and then just put it on the consent. That way, if anybody's got any issues with it, you can pull it off consent, and we can talk about it some more. But I do know, to give the board some information, this has been an ongoing work for about six or seven months now, that since we started meeting and meeting with the groups and these kind of things.
It's been a couple of months, yes.
Yeah, so I'd like to make this a little cleaner, just make a motion to have Bob and the attorney work out the language, put it on the consent agenda for approval. Then if somebody doesn't like how it reads, they can pull it off and we can discuss it again.
Jay, how do we do that?
Is that not, is that not what your motion was, Commissioner Green?
Well, he wanted to table it.
Well, you can move approval subject to the language and being presented on the consent agenda at the next meeting.
Right.
And if it doesn't meet what you thought it was, you can pull it and reconsider.
All right, so then, so we want to vote down your motion then? Okay.
Or he can amend it.
Yeah.
All right. Will you amend your, amend your motion?
Yeah, yeah. That's just, that's fine. I'm fine with amending it. The legalities of the thing, I just wanted Bob to be happy with when we pass this thing, rather than having to try to come back and pass something else when we get, if we don't like the language to it.
Again, in that specific issue, we just did not consider that, that was not our goal to have anything to do with that issue. We were concerned with the way people were keeping dogs at their homes.
All right, so you're going to amend your motion then, not to table it, but to make the changes and bring it back and place it on the mid-month consent agenda.
That's just what I had in mind, sir.
All right, good.
Second.
All right, good. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Mr. Meacham, welcome.
I'm still going to hear crap about Rockwell.
There you go.
Afternoon, Board of Commissioners, County Manager and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to present a conceptual partnership between the City of Salisbury Tourism Development Authority and Rowan County. Before getting into the specifics of this, I have invited Stephen Brown from the City of Salisbury to discuss some of the specifics of the memorial which is proposed for World War II and World War I veterans at the Patriots Flag Concourse. I'll let him get into the specifics of that. Then I'll come back up and address what the Tourism Authority has done, what we're proposing for your consideration this evening, and how the mechanics of that would work. Thank you.
Thank you for your time this afternoon. Patriots Flag Concourse is located at the corner of West Miller Street and North Jackson. Here you see a plan of the historic timeline for the concourse. What you have is a counterclockwise timeline from the 1940s for, excuse me, for World War I, back around to Afghanistan. And there are specific sites for different war memorials and for the folks that were killed in action in Rowan County. We are proposing that a war memorial called, for our World War Wall. And what you'll see here is the memorial is, it'll be built, World War I will have 39 to 40 names on it that were killed in action from Rowan County. And then the World War II will have, I believe it's 140 names on it that specifically are Rowan County residents that were killed. And their Rotary is in the process of raising money right now for that wall, and that's the purpose of this meeting today for the tourism.
Thanks, Stephen. Unless they have a question of the specifics. So the Tourism Authority was approached by the Salisbury Rotary Club and representative of that club, Mr. Reed Leonard, who submitted a tourism capital funds request, which is where the Tourism Authority has set aside in its legislation funds that can be dedicated towards tourism-related capital projects that the board considers to be important. Specifically, the total cost of the project that was submitted to us was around $76,000. The request was for a consideration of $10,000 from the Tourism Authority to be potentially matched with $10,000 from the county. Those funds would be held until the remaining private funds are raised, then would be remitted to the City of Salisbury for completion of the project. The project is on City of Salisbury property, would be maintained by the city. The city has already invested in the design layout and would do much of the work over the project. We did approve this unanimously by our board. We did put in the rider that it would be when the rest of the funds are raised. We wouldn't just remit money until we could verify that the remaining $56,000 has been raised by the group. It is our understanding they've already raised close to 25 for this, and this will probably help push towards a motivation to get the rest. All of our projects are considered on a case-by-case basis. This was the only project that has been submitted to us of this kind. Our quick reasons for approving this were predominantly because the military history is significant in Rowan County. It's also significant to the visiting public. The VA is a large driver of annual visitation of the community. We feel this supports that effort and are encouraged by the fact that it is on public property, it can be connected to honoring veterans within the community, and we would appreciate your consideration of this request and be happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
I have a couple of questions. Did your, when your board was discussing it, did they, sorry to hear me, what was the discussion, or was there any discussion about, does this, you know, if other municipalities want funds for their memorials, how would you handle that? What, you know, what is this, I guess what's unique about this that makes it tourism compared to what some of the cities are trying to do, things around that nature?
Yeah, so a couple of those questions. The first one would, if other groups wanted to request funding, we do everything on a case-by-case basis. So we look at the value of the project. We look at its location, its proximity, is it open to the public, is it accessible? Kind of some of our first parameters. One key thing we take in consideration is who's going to maintain it. We don't want to get in the business of maintaining sites and locations unless it's specific to us, visitor center, trolleys and so forth. Then what we do is we evaluate its connection to other parts of the community that attract visitors. So in this specific area, we have a lot of data and research on the military history and the VA in specific attracting visitors. The VA directly through overnight visitation, people visiting, family, friends, there's a longstanding military history in the community dating back to Revolutionary War, Civil War, and so on. That does bring visitors for everything from symposiums to ceremonies, memorials. In addition, we looked at this because of the current federal cemeteries that are attracting veterans and come for celebrations. So when our committee reviewed those things, they took into consideration, it checks a lot of boxes in terms of support. Also, I think what they look at is, are we being asked to solely fund this? And in this case, we're not. The majority of it's coming from private funds, but we don't want to remit funds if we don't know what's going to happen. So that was why we approved them, but we did elect to hold them back. So in every project that comes to us, we have to analyze them a case-by-case basis because each project is different. The end of that would be, if another group wanted to present to us, they would be eligible as well. It'd be just a matter of going through and verifying, does it check these boxes? Is it going to support the overall tourism initiative? Is it going to give another place for people to celebrate military history, veterans, and so forth? So we're really nonspecific to which theater of war or which location. We feel it falls in an overall bucket. And the fact that other efforts were already condensed at this one location, and then the city would maintain it, which we feel is important, if we make an investment, that somebody's going to be maintaining that investment for years to come.
Okay. So it's, you kind of, or your board kind of looked at the proximity to the VA. I mean, you didn't have numbers of how many people actually go to this park. I guess it's not able to track that.
No, we more looked at numbers of people coming to the VA and how many folks are ingressing to the community related to veterans issues. And so from that, based on those numbers, we felt it easily made sense to do it. Plus, we also look at what's going to expand the portfolio a little bit, meaning what's going to provide a few more military options or veterans' options to an area that is already attracting people. And so if folks are coming for a Revolutionary War thing or Civil War, this just adds to the overall product. As opposed to, if there was nothing here, we probably would not approve, starting from ground one. If there was no VA, if there was no national cemetery, if there was no military history, both Revolutionary, Civil, and so on, we probably wouldn't have done that, or the board would not have approved that.
So would, when you use the proximity to the VA, if, so how do you think that would affect if, say, China Grove, Orlando's were to ask for funds? Are they too far away from the VA to be considered?
I don't think so, because the VA, the VA, I mean, we look at the county as a whole, and this was the only request in front of us. So if China Grove submitted something, or Landis, or Rockwell, we would want to consider that. And to be honest, that's where we're going to be moving more anyway, is projects outside of the scope. But we're dealing with projects that are in front of us. And when we look at the capital funds request, it's really up to the person submitting the project to say, this is what I want to do, this is where I want to do it, and this is why it's important. And then we evaluate that and say yes or no. But this is the only request we've actually received. So I don't have anything else to compare it against.
Right. Just curious, do you, offhanded, do you know, do you, does the TDA support the Price of Freedom Museum? Do they do anything with them?
We have actually never been asked to directly provide direct funding of any type. We do list all their events, we put all their information out there, market it the same we would any site or attraction. But we've never received a direct funding request, whether it be for marketing support, overnight hotel support, or a capital project. But if we did, we would consider it like we do others. And just until recently, the state legislation wouldn't have allowed us to do anything out in the county anyway. So that just came into effect this summer. So we're looking to do a lot more out in the county over the next five to 10 years and hope to work with the commission on that. These is kind of, you know, a series of projects within Salisbury that have been further along that are coming to us now for consideration.
So is that, is that a product of the reorganization that we did, or is that something from the state? You know, we kind of changed the setup of the...
It's part of what the TDA board requested the state do in changing legislation that Commissioner Pierce and I and others were involved with. It allows us to spend capital money outside of the City of Salisbury. Originally, it was specific to the City of Salisbury. Now it's countywide in scope, so we can work in Kannapolis, Rockwell, Southern 85. And that's where we want to be moving anyway, but this is just something that's in front of us now.
Got you.
We would definitely not be opposed to someone else putting together requests, filling out the form, putting in the documentation. But like you, you know, whether it's an incentive or a request, you can only really deal with what's actually been asked of you, and this is the only thing that's been asked of us.
Okay. I don't have any more questions right now, but we'll have some comments before we make decisions.
So I got to tell my children, it's always no to ask. And if you never ask, it'll always be no.
All right, any other questions for James?
Who'd you say would hold the money?
What we're going to do is maintain it in our budget and request you do as well. And then upon, if it was approved and we had confirmation that the remaining private funds have been raised, we would remit the funds to the city within, say, staying in the public sector, and the city would use those with the private donations to build the project. Because the city will actually oversee the construction, implementation, and management of the project. But we would not be remitting funds to the Rotary. We would be just retaining it, and then when they've confirmed they have the funds, we would then remit them to the city to implement them. So, I mean, if the funds are raised, this fiscal year, great. If they're not, then we will proceed into the budget for next year and just place that as a holder.
Anything else?
Has the city, excuse me, did the city allocate any money toward this?
The city has already allocated resources and dollars towards the design, some of the initial construction work, the grading, the footings have already been put for this. So their contribution will probably be more than ours by the time it's all said and done. But this was the request to us, and so we're specific to that. In addition to that, part of our key was, is that the city would have to maintain the cost of keeping it up for the foreseeable future, and it wouldn't be a project that either the TD or the county has to maintain.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion?
All right. Some comments first.
Okay.
I support, I support this, and I know that each of the commissioners here support Knowing that probably, or more than likely, you know, this will open us up to supporting monuments in other municipalities, and I don't... And I don't necessarily have a problem with that. It's just something we should be aware of going in when we start funding monuments in different, in the different municipalities. I appreciate Commissioner Pierce bringing this up, trying to support the veterans and helping the City of Salisbury with their park. The only concern that I have is that we're all aware of the controversy that's been here with this park. That's been here at our meeting a few times over the last three or four months. And I think I had mentioned this to Commissioner Pierce in a conversation we've had a few months ago, is that it may be semantics, but I would prefer that when we approve this funds, other than have the same stipulations that, you know, we don't transfer the money until the rest of the money's raised, the rest of the funds are raised, is that instead of us saying specifically which monument that we're going to support, that we would donate ten thousand to the city towards a monument, and then if the city wants to use it for this monument, then that's up to the city. That'll keep the commission out of this conflict between what monument goes where and which monument should be first and which should be second. That way, we're still supporting this monument. But I'm sure the city's probably, if they have already done this, that's the reason that they're here to ask for it. But like I said, it may be semantics, but I don't want the commission to look like that we're taking sides over the different groups in this monument issue. It's a wonderful monument that I see here, and I know that each commissioner here has the, supports the military and supports everything that's been given. I just would prefer that the caveat that we add is that we're going to give it to the, I guess, the city or through the Parks Department, and they can use it for this monument, or an Iraqi monument, or the Vietnam monument, or, you know, Korean monument. It sounds like this is the next thing on their list because I understand they're trying to go in chronological order. But just to me, that would probably keep us out of some of the political aspects of the, of what's going on over there.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaski. Would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to ask Mr. Meacham, will this, in any way, this caveat affect the relationship with the TDA on this project with the city and the county? Okay.
We would still entertain future requests.
Then I'll make a motion that we match the Tourism Authority's ten thousand dollar donation towards a war monument at the city park. The funds will be dispersed at the discretion of the city towards which monument to use, and that the funds will not be allocated until the rest of the funds have been raised by, I assume, the Rotary.
Okay, that's a motion? Do we have a motion, a second? Is there anything else, any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Mr. Meacham, thank you. Thank you. All right, next item is consider approval of new Rowan County roadside litter program. Manager Church?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Caleb Sinclair, if you'll come up. I'm going to hand it over to Caleb to talk about this.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As you're aware, the Rowan County Department of Environmental Management oversees solid waste services for Rowan County, in particular, the landfill and recycling operations. What we're here to, to ask for approval today is sort of an expansion of solid waste services through our department to include litter pickup along the road sides of Rowan County. In the past, our department's partnered with the sheriff's office to coordinate litter mitigation crew. So that's sort of the only tool in our tool bag right now. Litter is a growing problem throughout our state. Once you sort of see it, you'll never unsee it on your way across the county. And it's not particular to Rowan County, but we feel that because we have such a healthy solid waste program, we operate, of course, by virtue of our landfill enterprise fund, we can fund this program without impact to the taxpayer. So what we propose is to add a position, one full-time position, vehicle and equipment to collect community service workers. We will partner with the Department of Public Safety and tap into their personnel resources through the community service program. We would collect those folks five days a week, get them out on the roads, primary roads probably we would target particularly. But we would have the flexibility to deploy, you know, to respond to the public's outcries for some help along their roadways. So we feel like we could take this on as part of our existing solid waste services, and we just seek approval to do so. Any questions?
I'd just make a statement. I travel Woodleaf Road every time I come into Salisbury. And having the landfill right off of Campbell Road there, we get lots of traffic. And you folks have done a good job. I know probably what, a year or so ago, maybe two years ago, you started policing that area pretty well. This seems like a huge task to me if we start trying to cover the whole county. How many folks do you see a need for if we try to get around?
Our program won't solve Rowan County's litter, litter problem. But it will provide us immediate response and flexibility to get some of those problematic areas. I do think it's another tool in our tool bag. I don't think it's a magic bullet. But again, by virtue of our very healthy enterprise fund, landfill enterprise fund, I believe we could, we can add one position, get those volunteer or community service bodies on the roads as well, and we could do some, do some good work. You're right, it's a bigger problem than our department can solve, but we can certainly be part of the solution.
Well, with, so you're saying immediate response? Or are you going to try to do this on a regular basis?
Yes, this will be full-time position. We will have that staff, at minimum, we'll have our staff member ready, you know, working five days a week to address litter on the road.
And you're saying that this does qualify to be paid out of the enterprise fund?
It's my understanding that this is an extension of solid waste services.
Okay.
They have loosened those parameters over the last few years to include solid waste enforcement officers, that kind of thing. So I don't, I don't think we're going to have an issue there.
That's good.
We're being offered a couple of options here. Are we going to try to do a pilot of this before we purchase vehicles and equipment?
To immediately purchase vehicles and equipment to make this happen. So, no, I would say this would be a full-on program out of the gate. We certainly can revisit that maybe come budget time or down the road to see if it, if it does have a positive impact and ramp it back if need be. But again, I think that the enterprise fund can, can make these purchases, and we can certainly use that equipment elsewhere if this program doesn't get the traction that we're looking that it will.
Do you have a preference of the two options?
So, you know, ideally, a ten-passenger van would fit more bodies, and we'd have more folks deployed on the roads. But per my discussions with the community service supervisor through the Department of Public Safety, we don't think we're going to have ten bodies five days a week. It's going to be more like four or five. So I feel like, in my opinion, that the utility truck option suits our needs best because, and will be more manageable for our staff member to keep those people safe along the roadside. This is not a, something to think about lightly. It's a very dangerous job, and we're going to have to focus on keeping folks out of the roadway, but to get this litter squared away. So in my opinion, a utility truck makes more sense. We certainly can, could go either way.
Do you, the F-250 you're looking at, do you currently use something similar in other parts of the enterprise?
We, we have, we do. Our landfill supervisor drives an F-250. I modeled this piece of equipment from our maintenance folks. I think a few of our maintenance vehicles are this exact identical vehicle. So in my opinion, the four-wheel drive will offer us ability to get off the road farther, more safely, and in and out of the landfill facility with ease.
I guess kind of what I was thinking is if, for some reason, this didn't work out, you would have a truck you'd be able to use in other places.
Absolutely.
Would you have, be able to use the van anywhere else if you weren't, if we weren't doing this?
Probably not.
Are we able to, I guess there's issues transferring vehicles from enterprise fund to enterprise fund or to the county? Does that have? If this weren't to work out after six months or a year?
We can do that. Basically, at that time, it would probably be a purchase from the general fund, purchased by the general fund from the enterprise fund. But that can be done so that we could put it in the facilities management fleet, if that's what we needed to do.
Do we, Mr. Manager, would we use these vans anywhere else? The van that's shown in the?
I can't think of anywhere else we'd use them.
I can't either. Not one that size. I know Cooperative Extension has wanted, you know, a vehicle, a smaller van, but I think their needs have now been met.
So if we went with the truck and then we decided at budget that we really needed a van, we could probably use a truck somewhere else to offset some funds somewhere else? I prefer the truck then. Okay.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you. I'm glad we're doing this. I know every commissioner is getting emails from more and more folks. And it's like you said, once you see it, you can't unsee it. I know Craig and I live out in the same area, and I'm going to tell you, 601 is atrocious. I'm embarrassed. We've gone out in front of our own neighborhood to pick up garbage, and it just continues. I don't understand it. I drove around not long ago and just took pictures all around the county, and it's bad. No offense to Salisbury, Salisbury's horrible. I don't know how China Grove is, Mr. Mayor pro tem, but same way. Jake Alexander Boulevard is an embarrassment. I hope, I hope we can get that cleaned up soon. But I'm glad we're finally addressing this. It's, it's part of how we view ourselves. Can't expect folks to view us in a positive light if we don't view ourselves any better than what we appear to be. So thank you for working on this, a good presentation. Thank you, Mr. Manager, for taking this on. Certainly been a big issue. So Commissioner Kaski, you want to make a motion? Then for the truck?
Sure. I move that we approve the new Rowan County roadside litter program using the F-250 crew cab option.
Second.
All right, very good. Any other discussion? All right, thank you all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. All right, item number seven. We had, early in January, a annual planning work session that was snowed out in the big snow, although Commissioner Klusman did show up and was ready to, was ready to work. She didn't get the memo that we had canceled. So we wanted to look back and, and kind of rethink the annual planning work session. And I wanted to throw out, since we are moving at a pretty quick pace on our Old Beatty Ford Road projects, thought maybe we could, instead of doing a full-blown work session with a whole lot of different topics, maybe we could dedicate that, as long as we needed to that day, to a work session for that project. We could have private sector folks that are involved in that project down there join us, along with developers. Also would like to invite Landis and China Grove, any leadership that would, would like to come in as part of that, the commissioners, possibly the planning department, permitting department. But just make a, if we needed to make a full day of it, I don't think we'll need that long, but we could do that, would, would give us a lot of momentum and then also involve the China Grove and Landis folks and what's going on. So it's just an idea. Wanted to throw that out for discussion. And we, you know, we can look at a date. We could try, try in early March sometime if we wanted to do that. Of course, we would, we'd probably have out-of-state folks coming, so we would need to coordinate that. But if we threw a date on the calendar, at least that would give us an opportunity to, to start marketing a date. So I'll just throw that out. If others have other ideas, certainly we could do.
So are you saying that our work session is, we're not going to go any other topics?
We can do what we want. I just thought that would be a, you know, a good one to pursue.
Oh, no, I mean, I think it's, it's good. I didn't know if, I mean, a lot of times, I know, I mean, we've had stuff in there that I don't know why we're doing it, but, you know, we do it for the, whatever. But.
You don't like the building block exercise?
Yeah, I don't like the building block. Some of the, whatever. But the, I do know that the county manager in the past has used that as kind of a
Budget.
Kind of as marching orders for the year of what projects or things we want to look at. So I don't, I mean, I don't mind us doing that, but I don't know if that's helpful or unhelpful for, for what the commissioners may want to do throughout this year.
Well, you know, I'm still in favor of doing a full day. We can do a full day. We certainly would love to hear from finance. Begin, you know, we'll be kind of right in the middle ahead and toward budget time. So we can use that for a time to begin reviewing budget. You know, if we have other goals that we want to set for 2018, we can certainly throw that, throw that down. We just, we didn't have that topic identified in a big block of time and certainly weren't inviting all these folks to be part of that. But it is, you know, again, we're marching at a, at a pretty brisk pace toward that right now, as evidenced by our vote at our last meeting to go ahead with a significant investment in casings. So, you know, we could make that the morning, we could make it the afternoon. We can add other items to that, but I'm just, just throwing that out.
What, I mean, in your mind, how long would, would we discuss that particular, that particular topic? I mean, is it, is that a topic that's a whole day's worth of?
I don't, I don't know. Two to three hours, maybe. You know, we'd have McGill as part of that. Landowners, developers, municipalities, planning department, could have folks here from, from the planning board, you know, certainly be part of that. This is a, it's a big project for, for the whole county.
Well, like I said, I think that topic's worthy, I mean, I would say it's worthy of its own time slot. Something that I was thinking about is that we have our late meeting on the nineteenth, and we could come in early before then, but I mean, I don't want to come at eight o'clock in the morning and be here until eight o'clock at night. I don't know, I mean, Mr., Commissioner Pierce is really involved in the, in the Southern Park water. I don't know, do you think a special day for that's warranted, or?
Well, it would just depend on if you'd like for me to reach out to the developer and have her make a presentation to the entire board, just to show what is being planned. I can probably make that happen.
I'd be, I can probably make that happen, but she's got to come here from Louisiana, so I wouldn't want to set that on our meeting date. I'm kind of in favor of what the chairman said. Let's just block a whole day, and probably for, for her benefit, make it after lunch. She could make her storyboard presentation, which would involve the other municipalities, the planning board, as well as anybody else, landowners that had a concern. I think once they see in black and white the plans for that area, I think it'd give a lot of comfort to everybody. And I think it would help us out in the general public to sell this $20 million water and sewer system. If they see what the finished product is going to be, as opposed to just, we want to borrow $20 million and just be, it'll be okay. I mean, that's kind of where we are right now. So if you would like for me to reach out to her and see what her timeframe was, and then set the day, that's, that's fine. I'll be glad to do that. But I don't think incorporating it with our evening meeting would be the way to go about it. Now, I'll do whatever you want. I mean, I'm just saying.
Well, no, I was just wondering if we wanted to have a day just for that, and then have another day for our normal?
Well, the presentation she gave me lasted about an hour and a half, so I wouldn't want to block a whole day and get this thing too complicated. Like I said, I'm, I'm actually meeting with somebody tonight that can give me an answer. So if you want to go ahead and tentatively set a day somewhere in, in first part of March, then at least I can give them a window of opportunity, and we'll see what works for them.
Well, the first week of March, the first is on a Thursday, so how about Thursday or Friday, the first or second?
Works for me.
Are you asking for preferences?
Yes, sir.
Any day but Friday.
That's your golf day, ain't it?
That's my golf day.
Got to have priorities somewhere.
That's exactly right.
Could we do it Wednesday and Thursday?
I don't think we need two days.
Thursday the first.
So how about Thursday the first?
Let's go ahead and set that.
Let's just set that for Thursday the first, and we'll wait to hear back from you. And Mr. Lynn, if you could reach out to your board, and then we'll reach out to Landis and Planning Department and Planning Board, and we'll, we'll have a party. Okay?
And also, if you want me to have a meeting tonight in Landis, and we can share that with them, if that's okay with you guys.
Perfect. Perfect. You want to try to make that afternoon, so we could tell them?
Start, I'd like to start our meeting, if that's okay with everybody, at 9 o'clock, and then recess for lunch. Start her at 1:00.
All right, so say 1:00 on the first. We'll shoot for that, but it's in pencil. Okay?
We want to have that here.
We'll have it here, yes.
Can I just ask that the clerk get us some high-protein breakfast instead of full carbs?
Amen, brother.
Not all that fruit he said.
Is it the board's intent to have the retreat that morning, like from 9 to noon on just miscellaneous items?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Get ready, Leslie.
We've been ready since the snow.
I know you have. All right, thank you for that. All right, we have budget amendments been provided.
Move approval.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then we have some board appointments. The first one, the Central Line Economic Development Committee, it's a board that I've been serving on as your representative. My term expires February 28th, so I'll, I'll continue on that board. So do we have a motion to accept me on that in a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
JCPC Miles Cannon applied to fill the youth, underage of 18 vacancy. He'll serve two years, so do we have a motion to accept Miles?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're asked to appoint Tony Winger as the county manager's designee, and there's no term ending date on that, but would start on February 5th. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nursing Home Advisory Committee, Joanne Diggs has applied for reappointment. Term will end October 31st, 2017. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Let's see, hold on.
It says her term is already ended.
It ended October 31st, and so we are asking for consistency with term dates, asked to approve the reappointment with a three-year term date effective November 1 of 17 through October 31st of 2020. So we need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, anything else for the cause?
Motion to adjourn.
I would just like to say to Bob that that was a really great article in the paper on Sunday, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Bob. You've done a great job. Dr. Mary, good to have you here today. Thank you for the good work you're doing, and good to have everyone here. So we have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.